Follow the order, this meeting of the Concord Planning Board, Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, at 7:06 PM. The Planning Board is convening this meeting in person and also by video conference using the Zoom application. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone attending this meeting in person and by video and take attendance of members and staff. Rob Almeida.
Here.
Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Abby Flanagan is not here this evening. Sue Felshen.
Here.
Mark Giddings.
Here.
And myself, Linda Miller, present. I'll briefly review our meeting procedures. Each vote will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during a public participation period should use the Zoom raise phone function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities, and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The Board welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. Those comments can be addressed to Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes at eHughes@conqueredma.gov. We'll now go to the first item on the agenda. And that is the zoning bylaw parking analysis discussion. And I will turn this over to Elizabeth to introduce our consultant and begin the discussion of parking.
Perfect. I'm just gonna turn this over to Sam Gregorio. He is with TEC. And he's gonna go through, Board members got his most recent batch of information, and I think he's just gonna quickly kind of go through that. He's got a couple of questions and follow-up items that he needs clarification from the Board as he moves on to the, you know, the next step, which he'll let you know what the next steps are as we move forward finalizing recommendations so that the Board can move forward possibly with some low-hanging fruit, short-term measures for this town meeting in 2024, and then, you know, talking with the Board about longer-term solutions. Sam?
Good evening, everybody can hear me right? Just want to start off that way. We had some microphone issues. So, good evening, members of the Board and members of the public. My name once again is Samuel Gregorio. I'm the Senior Traffic Engineer at TEC Engineering out of Lawrence, Mass. So, over the past few months, TEC's been working with the town to look into the current set of zoning requirements that are in place within the bylaw related to off-street parking and the different aspects of that off-street parking, including things like shared parking, transportation demand management measures, fees for parking, et cetera, et cetera. Over the last, about a week ago, the Planning Office and TEC discussed kind of a layout of what we want to do over the next couple of meetings in order to discuss leading up towards the town meeting and the need to put together whatever we need to, in that case, for warrant articles. And that kind of goes as follows. So tonight, and I think over the weekend, each of you, each member of the Board at least, I don't know if we made it up online yet, but each member of the Board got the first round of draft recommendations, which had a lot of information regarding where some of that information came from, some calculations that might have been applied, examples that might have been applied for some of the changes to what would be in the off-street parking table. So that's Table 4, normally known as Table 4, and what comes up probably in every development, as everybody will always see. So, what a lot of those recommendations were were based off of what TEC felt could be changed, what maybe land uses can be added, what land uses should stay the same, and what, but we'll get into some of the information about those aspects. And then we also provided information on recommendation for shared parking, or as the current bylaw describes it, joint parking, but generally the same, the same thing. What we were talking about to happen was going into the next meeting, which I believe is three weeks away, is to have, over that time from having comments back on that information, to provide a kind of a final version of how maybe that would look for final discussion and general, I don't know if the Board will have approvals going into the warrant article or how that will work, but at that time, that would be that. And then also at the next meeting, providing the next round of the draft material, which would be the recommendations regarding things like parking fees, fees in lieu of parking, transportation demand management, and how that would be structured. And then subsequently, that follow-up meeting following that, same thing, providing that period for a comment, and then that final recommendation at that next meeting. All gather all this information, that would be what we're considering, the low-hanging fruit, again, as Elizabeth described it, for town meeting to consider, if that would end up on the town meeting's docket. And then at that third meeting, also providing the other information regarding the longer-term measures, things that we should be looking at in order to maybe explore some of the other items in the bylaw, some other items in the parking table, for instance, that need a lot more data, maybe data collection within the individual community or the surrounding communities, then that would help support maybe changing what's actually in the bylaw. And that's just because some information that we have in some of the industry standard documents just don't have enough data to support needing necessarily change individual parts. So, getting to the information that was given over the weekend, I would first want to preface, say, going over, and this will be stuff earlier to the parking table first, and then we'll go into the shared parking. So, related to the parking table, one of the biggest aspects of what we were looking at in there is how, as opposed to supply, which is what the zoning bylaw really is providing requirement for, is what your supply is, looking at what actually individual land uses do for demand. And we have manuals and publications that go over that kind of material for individual land use based off of real traffic counts, traffic counts that are actually done at facilities, in this case, parking counts, obviously. And looking at what actually is the parking demand at this type of land use, what is the parking demand at this type of land use based on square footage, seats, employees, different, different variables. Consequently, over the weekend, one of the major manuals for that, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, the newer version of that literally came out on Saturday. So, not to say that the information that I provided will be off or different, but some of it might change as I go through the new manual, so that was purchased on my behalf yesterday. It's electronic version, which I haven't got the key for, they are my key, so I haven't been able to look at the document yet, but we have a lot of information that came from and for what they have now included into that. And one of the first things that we will be looking at into that is how, how that the dates line up with COVID-19, because we want to make sure any recommendations that we do give don't necessarily include what happened during COVID-19, because that would skew a lot of our parking supply, potentially larger in some cases, like residential, more people didn't leave their house, and therefore there's more just people parked versus less demand at a retail spot, which we might look for something that we want to do as a bylaw, but we don't want it to be skewed too low in a sense that all of a sudden we now have people parking in places where they shouldn't be because they didn't have enough parking spaces in an individual facility. So, what you saw over the weekend in those recommendations that TEC had, the initial draft ones, were the items that we felt were land uses that would be most commonly used and most easily available to change based on the data we have. And there is some data that we have that would generally see it as not something that we necessarily want to change. And I'll give the example, one of the things you might not see in there, for instance, is general office-type developments, an office building. And that's really because the bylaw as written today actually lines up almost exactly to how the industry standard publications have for demand at offices. Now, subject to change after COVID a little bit, when maybe a couple of years down the road from now, some of these things can be revisited based on what happened post-COVID with offices, because that's one of the big land uses that's gonna change. But at least in the immediate condition, the data that we would have would support the actual bylaws written. Whereas there's a bunch of other land uses that we could definitely see changing. And then there's a lot of land uses that we also did not include, and I know one of them came up in an email today, and I have the data with me, I didn't provide it because I didn't provide a recommendation with it, but for instance, restaurants. Whereas we look at the demand data for restaurants, for example, and a lot of the demand data would suggest that the bylaw actually should be providing more parking spaces, which is based on the discussion that we had had with the town, not necessarily wanting to look at directly at recommendations that would increase the potential parking on an individual site. So, I will go through that data a little bit into this presentation just to show you where we would be at if we were, and that doesn't mean we have to go with what the actual publicized demand data is. It just means that, based on what we were showing and how far it was kind of off from the bylaw, we didn't necessarily want to provide a condition, we were saying, well, right now we have one spot for three seats in a restaurant, where now would be in some of the instances, one parking spot per seat, which is a lot more parking on a site. We obviously wanted to provide questions to the Board about how they would want to approach something like that before we provided our, for recommendation for it. So, with that, I wanted to go over a couple of the, obviously, the land uses that we did provide recommendations for. I did receive some comments not too long ago from Sue on behalf, well, from Elizabeth on behalf of Sue, that a lot of the discussion I was gonna be discussing today would answer some of those questions. So, as we get into it, I'm gonna share my screen and go through each of the, I gotta find the please somebody to see my screen before I start talking, otherwise you don't want to do anything.
Oh, good.
Okay, so, what TEC did provide was, and these are the were individual, what we call fact sheets, that go over, in this case, trying to base it off of the way the bylaw is structured, or the bylaw is structured to divide out residential-type uses versus industrial-type uses versus business-type uses. And then individually, some of those uses have a more direct approach when it comes to, for instance, under business, they're looking directly at retail, for instance. So, under the residential recommendations that we had had, looking at right now, they're for general residential, as opposed to, for instance, a hotel, or as opposed to a equates to an inn, or like a bed and breakfast. All the individual residential uses within the bylaw are all lumped into kind of one condition right now. So that's the bylaw up top of the page in the informational sheet, which defines basically any single or two-dwelling or planned residential development, which basically is covering any possible residential personal family-type house or condo or apartment. And the requirement right now is two spaces per dwelling unit, and then one and a half spaces per dwelling unit for anything that subsidizes lower moderate income. And back a couple of years ago, MAPC had done an analysis directly for Concord, looking at the parking requirements for different types of land uses, and the information that came out of that particular data was looking at Concord versus other towns. And in that data, Concord was providing one of the higher versions of, I'm sorry, showing that the residents of Concord were having fewer vehicles compared to the other communities, which would suggest that maybe we, right off the bat, we have a condition in the bylaw that provides a lot more parking that might actually be needed. So, one of the key aspects, or one of the things that we would look to do is trying to split out the types of residential that there are. And I think that's one of the, that's really how the recommendation for residential has been set up here. So, kind of separating out would be the single-family, two-family dwelling, or basically the duplex, or the normal just house, neighborhood house, where, right now, that would be, at least our recommendation, similar to the bylaw as it is today, that two spaces per unit, and that could be inclusive of garage, that can be inclusive, and this goes to somewhere, I think one of the questions you had. It goes to really any position on the site that's dedicated, or could be dedicated for parking at some point. So, I'm thinking about like when I used to have a house in Georgetown, which has a third parking space that's just on gravelled rock off the driveway. And in some circumstances, how this could be worded up to the Board, but how it would be included, that is generally the case for what we would normally see in most of those types of houses. And one of the key aspects of why, I guess the recommendation is to keep it at two, is a lot of the other residential is where we get to the lower parking demand for any individual type of unit. But as for a single-family, two-family, and the location of those being on those neighborhood-type streets where you're not guaranteed room, especially in a town like Concord, where we do have a lot of narrow streets, not necessarily guaranteeing the space for on-street parking. So, providing that, making that space that they could park on site. Now, whether that is driveway, whether that is garage, whether that is some other way to have them on site, that's really where that aspect of that two-spaces comes into. And obviously, there are opportunities in towns like Concord where it's a historical town, a lot of the locations, you have those buildings up at the back of sidewalk, a lot of houses like that, especially in the center of town, where this is where some of the other parts of the bylaw would come into play, where if two-spaces couldn't be provided, you still have the opportunity to use the other aspects of the bylaw, similar to the providing on-street parking within 600 feet, or however the bylaw may be written into the future under that case. Where we get more into multifamily, and we start getting against the larger developments, I'll use the example of Brookside, would be this type of facility. Obviously, right now, I the way that the IT data really breaks down the demand for these, and this is under the 85th percentile peak demand, just not necessarily the highest amount of traffic that could be possibly seen parked on-site, but it's the 85th percentile of that peak. So, basically, that 310 days of the year out of the 360 is where you would typically see this number. And they basically have it broken out to exactly 1.5. I mean, it's 1.52 to be exact, but 1.5, and on a Saturday, 1.6. It provides us the opportunity to say that this should be just lower. We're not gonna see at any time a parking to be two per unit at these types of facilities. And that's something that we can definitely look at to bring down to 1.5. Or, based on our other considerations, bringing out by bedroom. So, we have an opportunity that these, larger these developments are, the more we have a different bedroom breakdown for one unit, two units, three units. That one, sorry, one-bedroom unit, similar to also a studio could count as a one-bedroom unit. But individually breaking down the bedroom count for those, whether it be one space for that one bedroom, one and a half space for the two, generally in line with what would happen with just a normal mix of the units. And then for anything, and that three or larger, giving it to two or 2.5, again, this is a minimum, so maybe going with two. But having those lineables, exactly how the demand is lining up in those industry-standard manuals. And then itself breaking out senior adult housing. So, under, again, the old bylaw, this would generally qualify under having two spaces per dwelling unit, where in most of the developments that we see under senior housing, which would generally be like that 55 and over community, the 65 and over community, this is type of community where it's still able-bodied, so it's still people who do drive, do walk around, do go to stores, don't need the council of aging bus, for instance, to bring them to certain locations. They, it's generally on your own, although you might have some service that might come to your house as opposed to a particular room that might get assisted living. Assisted living is a, obviously, its own particular land use. But a lot of these facilities, we've gotten to the point where that age comes into play, where you don't necessarily have to have two cars anymore, even if it's a person and their spouse. So, our data directly shows that we are well below one vehicle parked per each unit on these types of facilities. Again, we're showing 0.67 spaces per dwelling unit under that data. So, a requirement of one space per dwelling unit. Again, it can be inclusive of garage, because a lot of these facilities are gonna still have garages on their buildings, on the individual houses, which itself would count under that particular bylaw, but you could still take that one, just drop it at that point. And I use the example here of the town of Lexington has 0.5 spaces per dwelling unit. So it's just something to think about what we might be comparing to, looking at as a very similar type of community in terms of, you know, historical and commercial mixes throughout the town.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, a quick question, Sam, for multifamily low-rise.
Yeah.
What's the difference between low-rise and high-rise? Is that number of stories?
Yeah, so you're speaking to the data that was attached to this one. So, when we look at the individual, again, the manner that we're looking at that has those parking counts at different types of facilities, the low-rise, mid-rise, high-rise is directly related to floor count. So, the low-rise is, I don't have it right off on me, so I might just get this wrong, but it's basically like that three-story or lower type building. Mid-rise is four to 10. High-rise is usually higher than 10. We're not gonna necessarily see high-rises in Concord, but I've included the data in here to show that basically that we're still at a point at each of these that it's lowering on each threshold. But it looks at, again.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I, my question.
I had, did you want questions now?
Yeah, oh, that's up to you.
Oh, okay.
That'd be easier to take questions by topic.
Yeah, so in terms of the multifamily as well, should we express a preference for assigned or non-assigned parking in those situations? And or make that something that provides an incentive or consideration? Or should we, when we find out if something's assigned parking or non, should we have a different space requirement for that? How should we think about that, about that?
So, assigned parking is generally a facility-to-facility type item, and that's actually something that was gonna come up at the next meeting when we talked about transportation demand management measures, and how those will equate to each of the different land uses. So, one of the TDM measures that we do use on multifamily-type facilities is assigning parking, or pay for parking for the second space, for instance, a different way of doing it. So, coming to the bylaw, there's no guarantee that each of the developments that would come in are gonna have the ability to assign parking. Or even if they did, doesn't necessarily mean that that's gonna lower the amount of parking that they're gonna need. Even if there's a fee, there's still an opportunity for people to pay that fee and need the parking. So, as we go through this, if the, if the opportunity arises that we want to look at maybe a lower minimum for those types of uses, it's just a matter of where we want to put it, and if it wants to be this part of, or if it wants to go into the TDM measure section about a list of things that developers could do in order to lower their parking supply or things like that. Now, in terms of assigned parking, that does come into play for the shared use as well, so we're gonna talk about shared use a little bit later. Because one of the things that obviously comes into play there, and one of the things I think, I believe I wrote into that recommendation, was, in instances where you have assigned parking for residential, there has to be looked at again when in terms of shared parking, because you're not guaranteed that individual spaces will be empty for there to be a shared use of that parking space. If people are forced into a certain location. But that's kind of, I guess, a discussion we can actually have is, do we want that to be an opportunity that where we can lower the amount of spaces? Because you can make the recommendation, if you have a signed parking space, you can make it a lower number, but there usually has to be something associated with that. So I'm gonna do, again, a fee for a second space, or what if someone happens to have a second car, they automatically not allowed to live there? So it's, that's usually where the TDM measure part of it comes in, why we usually discuss it in that section.
Okay.
And then, then also, just because we're thinking about our subdivision regulations, should we be encouraging street parking? We really don't have any street parking at night.
Well, I believe street parking is not permitted during snow months. I can speak to that, like, between November and March or April, you're just not allowed to park on the street at night.
So we can't, really?
And, well, that's a, that's a factor of the Select Board is, you know, is the governing body on, you know, parking, public parking, and, you know, what are the restrictions? So, you know, that may be part of that longer conversation of, you know, looking at, you know, lowering some of these numbers from less pavement, you know, sustainability, heat island, you know, all of those items. And in the long, in the long-term discussing with the Select Board, well, maybe it's, you know, similar to in the city, you know, during winter months, you can park on one side of the road, and, you know, and the other side gets plowed, and you dig out your car the next day, and you can park on the other side, whether there's some opportunity for on-street parking in the winter. But that's a, that's a much bigger conversation with the Select Board and the Public Works Commission and, you know, budgets and, you know, staffing and, yeah.
Yeah.
It is a much bigger, it is a much bigger conversation, but on top of that, on-street parking in residential streets is a way to essentially make every resident of the town and every business pay to subsidize free parking for just the people who actually use on-street parking while adding to our carbon footprint by having wide streets that are often not parked on at all. So it doesn't seem like something we should encourage more of.
So it's a much bigger conversation.
Got it. Yes.
Onward, Sam.
The next item that we were looking at, under the business uses, retail. And under the current bylaw, the retail is really under one umbrella. One space per every 250 square feet of gross floor area. And under under generally industry standards, we see a wide variety, and this is not even just on the demand side, but the supply side, a wide range of every type of retail being really different from each other. And in Concord, or at least in this area, Concord having a lot of, and I think Sue even mentioned it, not having a lot of necessarily department store-type items, or the larger footprint items. But then, looking at some of the demand data that we do have, and then trying to compare it to some of the other communities.
Oh. You're freezing up on us, Sam.
Single, sorry, go ahead.
You're freezing up.
Sam, you had just said something about the size of larger retail stores, and then you froze.
Is this better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
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 No. Am I
You're freezing up, Sam.
What if Sam turns this video off? May he do that? That could help him not freeze.
Sometimes it'd be using like
For now.
For now.
Okay. So, the data that we were looking at under industry standard demand models is really showing that the single-tenant-type retail stores within, at some point, we have to make a breaking point in this one. We've said 40,000 square feet, which does seem like a lot, but over the grand scheme of things, a lot of the smaller retails are just really, really small, and a lot of the big retailers are really, really big. So it really could be kind of anything between, we can start looking at breaking down the data a little bit more in terms of where that square foot mark should be. But under that 40,000 square foot mark for those single tenants, and these are a lot, we have different types of uses that our data provide, things like the dollar store and hardware stores, you know, dollar stores being exactly what it's, you know, family dollar, it's the hardware store, it's your Ace Hardware, it's your corner liquor store, your, you know, AutoZone, your auto park store. And all these types of facilities, these are all types of facilities that are in that, you know, 15 or 10 on the lower side, if you're talking about a liquor store, but, you know, that area that's gonna get you somewhere below 40,000 square feet. And the individual data that we have from that shows that there's a lot less need for parking on a lot of those. They're not frequent, it's on Walmart, it's not seeing a lot of extra foot traffic. And so there's opportunity to take that bylaw where we have 250 and raise it up to 400 square foot gross floor area per that parking space. Whereas as we look at those larger box stores, which understandably in Concord, you might not be getting necessarily individual stores like this, but at least there's none, maybe a lot of them yet. But these are your stores like, you could say your free standing discount superstore, that could be something like a Target if you wanted it, but even if you're just looking at something like a home improvement store, it's a Lowe's, if it's a sporting goods store, like a Dick's Sporting Goods, if it's a electronics superstore, which I wrote into here, so that's your best buy. Not to say that that necessarily is something that's Concord's gonna be approving or Congress looking at, but to have something available in your bylaw that says that this is the one that's actually around that 250 square foot marker, so it's available to just be split out from other smaller tenants, where you can easily get away with. So it's available to just be split out from other smaller tenants where you can easily get away with. That larger uh or less amount of parking supply, four hundred square feet per parking space. Uh, so that's what some of the things the recommendations of TC has in here is to break out the land uses to separate them. So, yeah, there's some parts of that retail that really is at two fifty mark. If some of that retail doesn't need to be, it can be a lot more, so you're not bound to someone uh coming into putting in. Um, any parking spaces when they only actually need forty. Whereas there's also. Another use in here is supermarket, which is the other. Item here, so this is your supermarkets. Your smaller markets, um, even your corner store, actually, the data is actually almost exactly dead on from each other, no matter how big it is. As long as there's no gas bonds, that's one thing I know to have for when you're talking about your corner store, so your Cumberland Farms, similar type item, but with all the gas tanks. Which actually one eighty. Now, this is one where obviously the bylaw would go more parking spaces. But because it's an individual type use, something that's not necessarily gonna be on every corner in the town, and something that actually might need. Uh, the opportunity to have less than uh the two fifty square foot mark. If it's broken out in such a way that it's only the one individual land use to do so, that recommendation might come into play. Uh, so that's not to say that the town would wanna uh buy into this particular recommendation. But it provides the opportunity for that one individual use that might actually need it, where you don't again. You don't wanna necessarily have the overflow parking onto the street if the street doesn't, isn't able to handle uh the parking there. Um, so in this, whether there's on-street parking available or not, there's also the thought about. There's only so much on-street parking to go around, there's other land uses that need to be brought in that on-street parking as well. And then individually, again, another land use that's a common land use that we wanted to separate out from just general retail, that's. Uh, pharmacy uses, again, land uses that we typically see is typically something that we could easily see coming into a zoning board or a planning board. Uh, but something that also is easily definable is something that's needs less parking than the two fifty. Um, and based on all the demand models that we have and all. The data we have is it would have peak parking demand is somewhere around actually the three hundred square foot mark. As opposed to two fifty. So again, we can drop the amount of parking spaces on a site, knowing individual land use. Um, and those are the ones I think from other types of retail that's provided, and we have the data for. Gives us that opportunity to, our individual uses as opposed to. The general retail. So being center type retail, which is actually a little bit higher, so this would be falling into the, when we have the multi-tenants. Um, falling into that normal same bylaw that we already had, that two fifty. Um, where we kept it up at that single tenant versus multi-tenant retail for bigger boxes, cuz. The multi-tenant retail is also gonna be generally the same type of size as those bigger boxes, it's just multiple uses, uh multiple tenants in that space.
So, um, Sam, can I um ask another, so here's the example. We have a a multi-tenant shopping plaza. Um, in Concord where uh there's um a dry cleaners, there's a very small CVS. There's a very small um ace hardware, there's um mid, you know, a mid-size grocery store. How, with this recommendation, how would, you know? If I were looking in the zoning bylaw, how how would I, would I take? The multi-tenant retail. At, you know, one space per two fifty, or would I take? Um, the supermarket for the supermarket square footage and then. The, you know, multi-tenant retail for the other uses?
Sure. Um, and at least now, and this is one of the ones, and I'll process this by saying. The the sixth edition of the Parking Generation Manual, which again just came out Saturday. This is actually one of the land uses, the multi uh tenant. Uh, which will, which right now is defined as shopping center in the older versions. Um, is actually being split up into three individual uh land uses, was already done in the uh in the trip generation version of it, so in parking. Um, the new manual will split up the parking ones as well. So this is one that we might be able to look a lot more into over the next coming days when I I actually get access to the manual, uh hopefully tomorrow.
Great.
Um, to provide a different recommendation. Um, in the current version. Uh, of that manual, the shopping center, regardless of the. Uh, amount of tenants in the size of the building is still running in that. One to two fifty range, uh sorry, one space for two fifty range, regardless of my tenants, and some of that might have to be with. The individual accounts that were done for that parking, if you're looking at a facility that has something that's generally just not gonna have a mix. Turnover, so someone's not going to all three tenants, they're only going to one, and therefore you're you're filling up spaces. Um, with no intend intention to share, uh with another um tenant nearby. Uh, and that, or some of that might be coming into play, but this is definitely one that within those couple of days, it might be a revision based on the way that that data is split out, because. The way it actually is gonna be split out is is directly by size. And it will be four, it will be forty thousand or less, it'll be forty to one fifty, I believe, and then greater than one fifty, I believe. Either the the breakdowns, so and it's there, so I actually might have a change on that particular recommendation.
Sam, I'm wondering how this works if we have more differentiated required amounts of parking per use. Won't it make it more difficult for our commercial areas to be nimble if you have been? Permitted out for a pharmacy at one space for three hundred square feet and pharmacy goes out of business. Uh, and they, the owner thinks a convenience market would be a good idea. All of a sudden, they can't put it in because they're going to need a bunch more parking. Is that going to damage our commercial districts?
Well, I think I think what happens then is that when, what the the next conversation the board has is the shared parking and the TDM measures. And so if somebody has, wants to put a more intense use. Into the facility, one, they have to go through site plan and review for the change of use. Because it changes the parking requirements and that new tenant may have to implement. You know, additional TDM measures or provide other offsets.
Okay, thanks, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I would also assume that. Regardless of, even if it wasn't parking, that's tripping a certain um change in use requirement for the town, that the traffic to any of these would also be possibly tripping that as well, so. Um, cuz parking for, for instance, a pharmacy versus a supermarket are also wildly different uh than each other. Um, so it's just a matter of. You 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 could, you're. Also relying on the developer to know what he might be getting himself into as he purchases a certain property for what it actually is. And there's no guarantee that they'll be able to reuse some even the buildings that we have, I mean pharmacies have drive-through windows and they have certain setups. Uh, versus what another tenant might have, so there already might be no structural related changes to the building as well. Might not may even needing the space, there's other things that are coming into play.
In the room, Sam.
So, uh i- it's explicit there that the convenience store, corner market is no gas, where if it has gas, does it actually sit? I'm just.
Yeah, so gas is one of the ones where we have no. The definition as provided in the the current bylaw for things that would be service centers and stuff like that. Um, are really specific on what's included. Um, so, and some of this, and I also should mention at the top, some of this will also require also changes to section four as well as section seven. Because there's definitions involved, which are provided in section four of the bylaw. Um, so as we look at gas station, gas stations are really a different animal when it comes to bylaws and um, and that's just because. What's included in the parking space and the work people allowed to park for that, because there's a bunch of different things on site. Whether on tanks, whether it's the convenience store, is there a convenience store, is there not a convenience store, is there an air, is there a place to fill the air in their tires, are there? Um, service center bays, um, so right now. Um, that's not one of the recommendations that TC has, is actually uh to provide individual land use for that. Although if there was going to be, and this is something we can again explore. Um, it might come into that bylaw as a, this is something to discuss directly with the um, the planning department. As opposed to actually providing a direct bylaw, because each individual ones of those uses are so wildly different from each other. You know, Cumberland Farms is different than the, you know, BP. Um, just for the nature of one's gonna have. Bays, one's gonna have, you know, a mask disease, or one might have. Have a smoking industry. And they're just so wildly different from each other, even from a trip perspective as well. Um, and I I don't think it's a bad thing to have in the bylaw either. Um, individual language that describes that land uses that aren't defined directly in here. Are are to be discussed discussed with the plan department and the board, whether whether it's, you know, this board or the ZBA or. Uh, whoever the person who holds jurisdiction. Um, as long as it's something that attached to that says that data shall be provided. Um, cuz there's always, there's always a place you can go grab data uh to support your decision. Uh, on the development side and on the town side for each of those types of land uses.
So maybe for, for some of these other. These other uses in the zoning bylaw, you know, you know. Making a requirement that somebody provide that, that data. As part of, you know, their application. Um, for the building commissioner to make a, you know, a determination. So I think that's language we can definitely work on.
Yeah, and that's, and that's actually in a lot of different bylaw, a lot of different towns bylaws. Is, there's, some some towns have five items in their parking table, for instance, some have. Sixty, so, um, it's just a matter of how you wanna, how much, how far you wanna get into it, what you're expecting in your town to be built. Um, and there is some discretion still to the board, regardless of what the bylaw says, there is some discretion to the board, especially in the terms of, for instance, like maximums. Um, for what can be utilized in an individual site. So, also, I just wanna keep this moving, so, and again, there's actually need to comment, go ahead.
Sam, can I interrupt you for a moment and ask Linda or Elizabeth, how are we working this? As Sam mentioned earlier, I sent along some. Comments to Elizabeth, we passed them to Sam, should I be bringing them up as we go through, or are we holding discussion for the end primarily? Or should I not bring those comments up at all, because Sam will uh take them into account and uh modify. Or not modify what he has written up so far, and we'll discuss that next time.
Um, I'm gonna go with, since we only have about ten minutes left. Um, that, um, Sam, go through your comments and then work with you and I if he has questions. But, um, and, and then modify things for when we get to the the final draft. And final discussion on all of these items.
So, in in lieu of time, um, again, TC did provide other recommendations for. Um, industrial uses, um, sorry, institutional uses and industrial uses. Um, again, and I do welcome comments like that, and going back to what Sue just mentioned. For things I don't think we covered in the meeting today, or even discussing some of them, I'm all for providing individual kind of responses back to that. That can identify how we were approaching things, or any specific question. That uh and you had, I know like first, one of the questions you had was like, how how would you define senior housing, for instance, was one of them. Which I think seven we might have covered, defined as like, you know, the condo or. Individual dwelling for that fifty-five, sixty-five community or able bodies and, but I can definitely provide you with that, but. Uh, obviously, without having to go through each one of these, um, you know, I do welcome again the comment to where, uh, I tried to provide discussion. The recommendation and the discussion of why we were kind of, we're going where we were. Um, and again, that doesn't mean that we can't adjust from that location, cuz again, if we're talking about minimums. You could still go lower, cuz you can still, all because it's a minimum, doesn't mean someone can't provide more, it just means that. Uh, it's up to the board, and it becomes the board decision about how much more um parking over the minimum that you might be going to ask. During an approval process as opposed to a waiver for something that's under. Uh, but, couple things I just wanted to quickly mention is we did um look at restaurants, um, this is data that. I wanted to bring up as a question to the board, where was one of the, is where we would be showing. Uh, especially at the top of this particular chart that you see on the page, if we're looking at by seat, well, right now the requirement is. Uh, one parking space for every three seats, and I think one per employee as well. Uh, employee for the largest ship, I think is the exact wording. Um, the individual restaurants and. This is might be one of the ways, uh, whether it's bike, which is a good way to develop the amount of trips to and from a site, definitely. But might necessarily be one of the ones you wanna look at in terms of the amount of parking, is the parking is wildly different based on um the type of use. Um, that's there, and that's because, you know, uh, if you're going to a Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, a lot of it's, you know, walking inside and leaving immediately. You know, as some restaurants are the uh friendlies or, that is a bad example, cuz it's somewhat out of business, but. Um, providing a certain part of parking space, but each of those individual restaurants, and you'd look at it by seat, it's actually something where it's about one parking space per. Per seat or one to two seats, and that's. Obviously, much more parking spaces versus the requirement, uh. And whereas most of the restaurants in the town of Concord are gonna be in locations where there are available things like on-street parking and other things that you could possibly use. In the town, so right now, because it was something that would be something that might be requiring more parking spaces, we didn't provide a recommendation yet, but I wanted to ask the board. As a direct question, this doesn't have to be answered right now, it can be answered over the next week or so, as we start. Going beyond the draft versions of these, um, to say, what's the town's position on? Having something be lower, especially if the data really does support it to be lower, or changing the bylaw in such a sense that it's done by a certain square footage. Uh, which might. Change the individual type of uh way we look at it. Either way, it looks like there'd be more parking spaces versus what the bylaw already has uh for each individual use. But it's also something that if the data fully is supporting it, is it something that's actually needed in that sense? So I wanted to leave that up to the board, and there's other similar uses that I have that were broken out of the same way restaurant, I know was brought up in one of the comments, so I wanted to bring that. Individually, but we also looked at uh a couple of other things like fitness centers, you know, your Planet Fitness or your Boston Sports Club. If that was something that was gonna be a new land use and how that would break down, cuz looking at the data for that. Be the same thing, it's something that would, what quite possibly require more parking versus what the bylaw does. Uh, and that means the recommendation might be, don't change anything, leave it as it is, and then we just have a um. A bylaw that stays the same. But I guess the big thing I wanted to break into before we uh like go today is talking about the joint or shared parking. And the way the bylaw is written now.
Sam.
Go ahead.
Can you send us the restaurant information you just showed us?
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it, you know, because it wasn't direct recommendations, which is why I didn't send it out Friday, but I can, once uh, it was brought up to me this morning. Yeah, and oh, I can easily just provide that, so, um, I'll I'll send that to you, um. Probably person in the morning when I've been locked back into my uh office computer. But on the joint shared park facilities and the way the bylaw is written, it in a, in a way that structures, um. Really the facility to, you can take credit for the ability to have other uses on site. It does provide a recommendation for the types of uses that are applied to that. In a threshold for what they could be used, which is fifty percent of the parking spaces required uh could be uh. Um, credited, so where TC's recommendation comes into play for that is.
Oh, you froze again, Sam.
Sorry?
You froze again.
Better?
Okay, go ahead.
Better?
Well, well, keep talking, we'll see.
Okay, I moved to a different part of that. But. The bylaw as written is really limited in what the ability to use that sharing credit is. Um, based on individual land uses and based on the amount of basic credit you can take. So, uh, what TC's recommendation was, and we provided somewhat, some language here that could be used, and this is. Um, kinda pieced together from a different, a couple of different uh towns that we were looking at that have different requirements. And how each of the one of them would change, and basically what I'm trying to do, and as a recommendation, is open up the opportunity. For basically a lot of more land uses and a lot more ability to take credit. Um, for for the parking that's uh provided on site, um, there's a couple of different ways that this could be done. Uh, that's, there's the city of Lowell example, which I I'd mentioned in in the recommendation, which. Provides a a way of doing this, and but it still caps the amount of parking space you can credit by land use by time of day. Uh, which doesn't really allow for flexibility for aging, every time something really changes over time. You have to go back and change the bylaw when you do it. Uh, so better, but just not something I think that we can, um, I think we can go further, and so what that is, is. Providing kind of a a system where, and this is the, I guess the paragraph that's in the middle of the page right now. Is, if you can provide the evidence as a developer that supports, you know, using. A maximum amount of shared parking that you could possibly use, then there's no reason why we as a town shouldn't be able to just have them use it. And going back to what happens again, if they were to change. Site like new owner, they wanna change it to a retail or a restaurant, that's probably a side about setting something up in the bylaw, and I think I have that in here too. Yeah, if that happens to be the case, you still have to come back to the board and necessarily provide the information that you can be supported. At at that time. So. There's different publications, like again, I've been talking about IT's parking generation publication, but there's, you know, the Urban Land Institute shared parking publication, is. There's different publications, like again, I've been talking about IT's parking generation publication, but there's, you know, the Urban Land Institute shared parking publications. It's literally a book about just shared parking. Uh, and data points for that. Um, or it could be as simple as if they could provide. A similar site that they own in a. And a neighbor nearby town, let's say someone, they built the same type of facility of mixed uses in Sudbury, they wanted to do the same thing here in Concord. Well, they could provide the parking there to show that X is. This amount of parking spaces and, and it's something that's really credible to the town, which there's no reason why they really shouldn't be able to use that. And. So providing a bylaw that really opens up the opportunity. For the developer to use that to lower the amount of parking supply really needed. While still protecting and providing language in here that protects the town against, you know, what happens if there are different tenants, different land uses, what happens? If it is something like uh, joint parking between two different uh, uses uh, which. Uh, sorry, two different developers that are just next to each other and some of that was already written into the bylaw. Um, already, so that's good, but. Um, but there's also considerations with that. Um. And. Is there a requirement that in order to use shared parking, are we actually requiring things like special permits? Is it something that's just part of the general? A part of the bylaw for anybody to use? Um, is there a distance requirement that needs to come into play? In terms of what can be considered shared use? And what I mean by that, it's not necessarily the six hundred foot rule, for instance, with the Yonshii parking. Part of the bylaw that's already in there. Uh, but it's something like. If you have a giant site. Um, and there's an industrial use in a Dunkin Donuts, for instance. But they're the same site, same developer, but they're five hundred feet apart and it's obvious that the. Person parking at the Dunkin's gonna have to get in their car again to drive to the. Um, to the industrial building to park. Then, you know. There's not this, uh, there, there might be up to be a requirement in here that says that that can't be really counted as shared parking, because we also still don't want people to necessarily park. Into like neighborhoods into other places where they shouldn't be parking. We still wanna keep them on the site. So it's just other things that might need to be considered and how we might wanna word it. But I did provide an example with this one. Uh, and just to show you exactly where some of the information comes from, the IT manner that we were using, for instance, some of this data. Has different uh, peak to parking demand breakdown by the hour for. The, you know, the dozens or hundreds of accounts that are into those particularly in uses of data. So we have all times of day that these things could be moving and. What we would typically do is TC, for instance, for a developer. Is I'll go all the way to the end just to. Um, quicken it up that we can break down how many parking space an individual use needs and then combine all the spaces to find what the. Individual part of the day. Um, the whole site might need. So if you're looking at. This particular table right here is looking at, for instance, a residential, an office and a retail on the same. Uh, site. They all have different times of day that they're being used. Um, it's on, and going back to kind of the assigned parking part, as long as there's no assigned parking on the residential. These parking spaces could be used at all different times of the day. Uh, these are all very, these are peak parking demands, they're not average parking demands, which really. Uh, where the highest amount of parking could be on site, you're not gonna run into a necessary issue of running out of spaces. But it really provides the opportunity instead of, for instance, saying that the peak for residential, the peak for office, the peak for retail, which in this case might be like something like three hundred and fifty. Parking spaces. If you share it, it can be two thirty. It's a big drop in parking if you allow people to use the maximum amount of their. Um, data to support their change. Um. And looking at the opportunity to say that, that's the bylaws written in where it might be an individual land use can only use fifty percent. Into that shared credit, maybe that two thirty goes back up to like two seventy. So we still have more parking than we actually need and there's gonna be a lot of empty parking spaces for. All, all large parts of the year. Um, which I, I think is one of the things that we wanna get away from doing. So it's just, this is the way, this particular setup is the way the recommendation is written. Again, I did talk about how I do have a screen here showing it. How the uh. If you can see this now, the way the city of Lowell does it, the city of Lowell again. Has individual by land use. Percentages that you can use and you mix them into a table. Uh, that's how they do it, similar, but it, it's a little more restrictive. Um. So. Uh, TC was just showing a recommendation that's beyond that. To allow for that again, that maximum amount of sharing. And again, this stuff and I, it can be used with. Um, any different land uses, all these land uses that we do have and a lot of these manuals have. The individual time breaks down, just like that's shown here. Um, so you can do this with almost any land use, you don't have to limit it to just the five or six. That for instance, like our bylaw might be mentioning or a bylaw might be mentioning. So that, that's really the. The overview of the different recommendation that TC has, at least for now. Um, again, um, there'll be some additional recommendation under this particular um. Uh, individual parts of the table coming to the next meeting, like the restaurants as we, there's more comments that come in. And some other things that we're looking at comparative to the new data that came in with the new manual, if there's anything that would want to change. And then obviously we were looking at that transportation man management. Items in our draft recommendations as well as, you know, fees and lose of. Fees in lieu of parking or other type of structures like that. And other parts of the bylaws that might need to have recommendations. Uh, but at least for now, I'll, I'll open it up to other comments, questions that you have before we move on in the agenda.
Uh, yeah, I'll just pull quickly to see if there are any uh, questions on the part of uh, board members and then I'll say, this is, this has been great. I, I think we have um. Really a lot here to sink our teeths into um, over the next couple of weeks. And um, so what I'm hearing from you, Sam, is that you would like us to feed Elizabeth uh, questions, comments, um. Uh, clarifications, uh, suggestions over the next um, two weeks. And um, then we can, um, i- is that a good timeframe for you to um? Get that in meetings and then um, have the next.
Yes, cause the next meeting's three weeks away. So yeah.
Excellent.
It'll last for another week to revamp anything we want to. And in the meantime, we're also working on the other items that'll come before you as draft next time.
Okay, and um, unless there are any pressing questions, um. I guess there's one pressing question, but um. Uh, we'll take some public comment now.
Thank you, Sven, we were fifty down. I just had two questions. One is. I'm not sure if the parking bylaws are right placed, but would it be a place to think about charging stations and requirements, sorry, charging stations? Um, again, that might be somewhere else.
Oh, I can answer that too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the answer to that is actually yes, and that's. Uh, part of the setup for the next meeting, which is the transportation demand management. Items and how those would factor into parking and things like that, whether it's. Lowering parking or changing the type of parking. Are part of that EV charging stations or EV ready if there's no charging station yet are definitely part of that.
Uh, the other and, and the other um, other side of that as far as um. Sam's talking about if somebody um. Wants to, you know, have some type of transportation demand management measure and taking credit for something. That that's in the zoning side of things, but an actual requirement for. You have to have a charging station for every ten or twenty or whatever the number may be. Um, that also may be more appropriate in site plan rules and regs. Um, which is next on the board's list after MBTA communities.
Yeah, well, so the, the second question is on the, the um, residential parking requirement. I'm not hundred percent getting why we're also not thinking about linking into bedrooms. So let's say I have a two family dwelling, but one is probably a one bedroom. Um, unit. Um, why would that require two parking? And the other thing is like if people build a whatever seven, eight thousand square foot mansion with kind of ten bedrooms. Why is it only two parking lots if they're kind of eight to ten bedrooms in expansion? So that, that's another thing to, to think about. Um, so if you want to. Make kind of um, potentially uh, two family dwellings in a. In a structure more attractive, it might be with respect to the bedrooms. Um, in that dwelling instead of posting two or potentially one that.
Thank you for the comment. Um, and I think I see Pamela Drit has a comment as well.
Thank you, thirteen Concord Green. I was going to ask about. Um, charging also, however, I want to encourage. Um, people that don't have electric cars don't realize how important having residential charging with the unit where you live. Is and is going to be in the future. And if we don't require multi. Unit. Uh, residences to at least allow, uh, at least require. Charging capability. For every unit, every parking space for the unit. Then we'll be behind. And if multi-units are going to be our moderate and um. Low uh, cost housing, that's gonna be doubly true. It'll be. Hard for us to be. Support families when all the cars are electric, which will come pretty soon. Um. Having, having a, a shared charger. Uh, for every X number of spaces is not a good solution. It isn't enough. And I can tell you from personal experience living in Concord Green. Those people in Concord Green who have little garages with their units are all set. But if you don't have a garage. Then I am not free to charge my car when I need to. I have to go to charge point. And I can't necessarily. Charge during off-peak times either. Nor can I leave my car charged plugged in at night and go to sleep.
Thank you. Okay.
And also can I suggest that we consider? Municipal parking lots of multi-levels?
Well, I. Uh, that is definitely outside the scope of, of this project and the zoning bylaw.
So come back another time. Ms. Drit, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, now, um.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. And.
Again, I'll send out some of that additional information. Um, tomorrow morning and if, once I, once I get the login. For the new version of the parking generation manual, I'll. Send out a message that just goes over quickly before I even send out any revisions, revisions to recommendations. Somebody, information that comes out of that.
To be on the leading edge here in Concord with the new. Uh, regular, new recommendations. Okay, and um, are we going on to site plan? Are we talking about the? Cross point or is that?
Um, so the, um, yeah, the board has to continue. That was on your revised agenda.
Oh, I see. So we don't have anyone here presenting?
No.
Oh, okay, fine. Um.
To continue.
Okay, um, do I, would you like to make that motion?
Um, I make a motion that we continue the application for. Cross point associates on the zoning bylaw section eleven point eight, decide point review to demolish existing restaurant building and construct a new one. Multi-tenant building with site improvements at seven sixty-eight hours.
To. No.
To November fourteenth at seven PM. Thank you.
One second.
You have to take a little, I will try to take the role call. Um. Mark Giddings?
Yes.
Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
Sue Felshman, Felshen?
I, I.
Rob Almeida?
Yes.
And Linda Miller, yes. All right, and so now we can move on to administrative business.
Yep.
Okay, so now we will have um, public comment. Uh, general public comment is limited up to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone's speaker. General public comment is limited to items that are not on today's agenda. Do we have anyone who would like to make a public? Comment? If not, then we'll move on to um. The twenty twenty-four annual town meeting draft warrant article. Um, regarding two family dwellings by special permit in Residence B zoning district. And I will hand that over to Elizabeth and Andrew.
Um, thank, so in the board's packet was a draft, um, it's. It's a fairly simple amendment to the bylaw itself. Um, it is uh, just the actual explanation. Um, and really a conversation by the board now that you see the draft. Warrant article in writing, um. Whether the board wants to. Um, move forward with uh, the warrant article. Um, and let me. I mean, the, the board has, has quite a bit on its plate as far as uh, the MBTA communities. Um, but. Um. A lot of, um, the board did receive quite a, you know, quite a few conversations dur- during all of the public workshops. About uh, you know, just in general, expanding. Uh, opportunities for. You know, these, you know, two family dwellings and. Um, this is, you know, this is a fairly simple way to do that. Um, so I don't know if anybody had. Questions or um, you know, whether the board wants to think about. Additional explanations or comments?
I mean, my only thought on this whole thing was that it could go further, but this is a good way to ease into it. If the, the idea is to eventually let. More types of housing start to, you know, it's a palatable way for people to see. That more types of housing isn't necessarily going to change everything all at once. Because it doesn't affect the far, which means that these. The things that are built do not necessarily overpower the area that they're in. It doesn't supplement any sewer requirements or anything like that. So if it has onsite septic, it's still limited in that way. Can't increase, you know, it's not modifying your neighbor encroachment, you know, all of these things that we talk about. As the reasons why change is bad, this is fairly minimal. Um, one thing I also did look up just because I was curious, I. I don't know if anyone here knows, but about three years ago, the city of Minneapolis eliminated single-family housing. They, they said all single-family housing can now build one to three houses by right, one to three units by right. And it's been done about sixty times. And in the meantime, that, that's about forty for two families, about seventeen, three families. And they've added nineteen, nine thousand units of housing. So it's all been larger multi-development where actual housing is being built. This is just an option for people to use. It's not a dramatic shift in any particular way. Um, and as you can see by the chart, it's only been used about four times. So. I just, yeah, this, this is sort of, when we talk about possible evolution of code, this is one of those things that. I could see going further later, but this is a good first step.
Yes, what Mark said.
Andrew.
What Andrew said.
Although, Andrew, okay, sorry, you're about an inch across for the entire.
There you go.
My apologies, Andrew.
No worries.
I, no, I, I mean, I think. Um, we definitely should put this out there. I think um. You know, we'll, we'll hear at this public hearing if there's any backlash, but I can't see. Why we would and I, I think um. It, it fits in where we're going, but not too fast, which is what I. What I fear is what people want us to do, do the right thing, but not too fast. So I don't know, do we need to take any kind of uh, just. I think that's their sentiment.
No, I, I, um, but I, I would. Ask that board members still kind of, you know, read through the explanation and. And just, you know, I mean, add, add. Add things like that statement. I've. Um, I, you know, since when I first started here. Uh, warrant articles that got submitted did not um, even have an explanation. And. You know, over the years, we've. Um, we've. Been expanding the explanation and I think that has. Um, really helped as far as people understanding, cause um, you know, to be honest, sadly, most people. Aren't even involved, don't even know until the warrant comes in the mail. Um, so I, I think those types of real statements that. Um, you know, this fits in where, you know. Um, where the community wants to go, but you know. Uh, does not represent, uh, necessarily represent a significant change or moving too fast. So. Um, that's, that's all I would ask is um, ask for, you know, input. Just expanding the explanation, I think is all, is a good thing.
I think it also helps um, whoever is developing a presentation. Um, at um,. I think it also helps, um, whoever is developing a presentation, um, at, um, town meeting to have that input. And sometimes if, you know, if, if you take this, I, you know, I, this is to me what should be the basic message we're gonna try and get across at town meeting and sort of think of how this would look in a presentation at the hearing and town meeting and how to, you know, wordsmith a, a little bit. So, yeah.
Great.
Okay. I have a couple of like
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Sue type comments.
Both pages or just this page?
It's on that one. Just go a couple.
Oh, there they are. Okay.
Thank you. Continue.
Thank you.
Okay. Now on to the MBTA Communities Zone, zoning update discussion. And, um, Elizabeth, would you like to?
Let's go. Um.
About how we got to where we got to and we're, we're going from here?
So, um, working with, um, our consultants, Jeff and Gabby from Horsley and Witton, um, you know, they took, um, all of the feedback from, um, the four different, you know, four different workshops, um, and, um, you know, comments that, you know, they have been receiving either through, you know, the surveys or the mapping exercise. Um, and in conversations with the board and, you know, input from, you know, Linda and myself is we've been attending, um, numerous different meetings and groups and people and constituents. And, um, we're actually putting together a calendar for the webpage that shows, um, all of the different, you know, community engagement, um, things that we have done. And after the last, um, meeting, um, and conversation that the planning board had and going back and working with consultant, um, coming up with what we're calling, um, draft, um, op, oh no, draft, I think we call it. Draft overlay. Well, they labeled it draft overlay one. And so this is, this is the, the, the first map that gets out there and having a conversation and how we got there. Um, and let me, there we go. Um. Does everybody need to see? Everybody else? Okay. Um, so a lot of the, um, feedback that the board got through all of these different public engagement opportunities was, uh, one, um, again, you know, not going too fast, not going too far. Um, making sure we come up with something that's compliant, uh, looking at both station areas. Um, but also that, that parity question of, um, you know, West Concord and Concord Center. And trying to develop a compliance model, um, with different districts that address all of those issues has been very, very challenging. Um, because, you know, they're, they're different areas. They have, you know, different constraints. And, um, I don't know if, let me, let me see if I can get rid of this. And there we go.
That's a little better.
Yeah. So starting, um, this is basically a, um, this first draft, it has five sub-districts. Um, they, um, they all have the same parameters as far as, um, you know, 15 units per acre, um, you know, three stories. Uh, they, this compliance model does go with one parking space for studio, one bedroom, 1.5 for, um, two bedrooms. And, um, two for, uh, three-bedroom units or more. That was a conversa- you know, a comment we heard a couple of times. Um, and so, starting with this orange area up here at the top. Um, this is Concord Lumber, Concord Oil. Then there's, you know, just, there's three residential properties near there. Um, ma- to make up five acres because it's outside of the half-mile radius. Everything else around it is town-owned land and excluded. Um, then we have the two, uh, sub-district two, which is, um, Concord Market, Walgreens, and 97 Lowell Roads. Um, and then this yellow district down here, uh, this larger one is 100 Kaiser Road, which is the Rose Hawthorne. Uh, and then this, uh, yellow small parcel down here is 100 Main Street, which is the old Welch's, um, building. Um, down in this corner, um, we looked at the current um, density of, this is where Thoreau Gardens is. Um, there's the gas station and then around the corner from there is two existing two families. Um, one single-family dwelling and then the, the vacant lot where the house was demolished. Um, and asked them to look at the current density of that area. And the current density um, is approximately 12 units per acre. Uh, so in the model, we asked them to limit, um, this sub-district three to 12 units to, you know, per acre. So isn't different than anything that is there now. Um, but goes to that, um, comment, uh, you know, repeatedly about, um, parity between Concord Center and West Concord. Um, over here, the blue district, uh, sub-district four is, um, Junction Village, uh, Concord Park. And then this area right in here is the 10 acres, um, that are, uh, currently proposed for the Novo Riverside Commons 40B. Uh, and then this area up here is the Elm Street where, um, Paparazzi's is the gas station, the little office building and what's going to be a new Dunkin' Donuts. So taking these five districts, um, through the compliance model, uh, it comes up with a unit capacity of 1,214. Uh, we're required to have 1,094. Um, dwelling units per acre, taking all of this land together. And, and once you take out the excluded land is 23.1 units per acre. Um, but I want people to, you know, understand that the zoning bylaw, the written language is, you know, 15 units per acre. It doesn't, it doesn't allow somebody to be more dense. Uh, this is just the compliance model. And when all of the areas taken together, the state's requirement is you have to overall have 15 units per acre. So we're at 23.1. The area within, um, the half-mile radius, we're at, um, 52.84%. Um, 50% is required. Um, and total area of these five dif- districts is 84 acres. Where 50 acres is required. So, um, this, yeah. This is about, from a planner's perspective and speaking with our consultants, um, this is about as close as I would like to get. Um, because the state will come back and they will go through this whole compliance model. And, um, they may, they may say, okay, well, you know, that area can't be included. So that's going to reduce it. So I, I would, I would definitely advise the board n- not to try and get this so, so narrow or so close that if, if something happens, um, that we end up being in not, non-compliance because we're too close to the requirements.
So in other words, when people said we should go with the legal minimum, this is
I'm
about as close as you can humanly get.
Um, y- well, you could, you could
I, I understand you could get like
You could take out one little parcel here and one little parcel there, but, um, you know, the, the, the compliance model that the state is requiring is, you know, it's pretty complex. And, you know, they may come in and, you know, immediately throw something out. I don't, um, I don't, I don't know. Um, so, but I mean, that, in, in my mind, that's pretty close.
Pretty exact.
Um, and, you know, 52.84% um, is, you know, that's about as close as I want to be to having, you know, 50%. No. Anything you want to add?
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Um, so I, I don't know if you want to open it. We have something special to show you after this. This is just, this is, this is the minimum. This is
This is the minimum.
This is what you, you can present.
The other five hundred maybe, yeah, two.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to take questions on this?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So, we have to have this done by the end of the year, correct? Or else we run the risk of losing state funding for
No, end of next, next year. So, so the time, yeah, so the timeline is, um, the board has to have this warrant article done by the end of the year to be placed on the warrant. Um, and then it'll goes to town meeting. And then from there, it would be submitted to the state with all of the GIS compliance modeling.
Right.
They have 90 days in which to, uh, review it. Um, so if this were to be passed at town meeting, um, we would probably immediately submit this um, to the state. Um, because if something came back and it was found in non-compliance, um, there would be enough time to hold a special fall town meeting to fix it. Um, but, um, that's not anybody's preference, but
Good thing we're going to town meeting, starting on Mondays now, not trying to do all in one day, because this is gonna take up a lot of time, don't you think?
Um, I, the, the a- amount of public e- and, and that's a, that's a separate conversation, not for tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, no, we'll be, what is going to be our public engagement once the warrant is submitted? Um, because there's, there's still going to need to be public engagement and explanation, you know, and answering questions from people, you know, after the warrant is, you know, closed and the article gets submitted. Um, I am, I am not expecting that it just gets submitted to the warrant and then the board waits till the public hearing. Um, that's definitely, we still have our public engagement consultant. Um, so I'm going to be strategizing with her on, you know, how, you know, and, and it may just be another, just another public workshop, um, where, you know, here's, here's the warrant and come and, you know, ask your questions so that, that, that's not the focus at the public hearing.
So let's say that we go forward with this and fortunately it passes and the state comes back and say, you're all good. That means that those areas can now be developed by right into wealthy family housing, correct?
Um, with, um, the, the actual language of the bylaw will still require a site plan review.
Okay.
Um, which that would, that was, I was gonna wait till my, my town planner, um, you know, updates, but, um, we just got notified yesterday, um, that, um, uh, Mass Housing Partnership has granted us an additional, um, grant for $15,000 to develop site plan rules and regs for our MBTA community zoning. Um, so that's gonna, that's gonna be happening all at the same time as, um, going through, um, two 40B applications. That was my other surprise.
Yeah, obviously I know one.
I know. Uh, we got notified, uh, today that an additional comprehensive permit has been filed with, uh, Mass Housing um, for, um, uh, 13 acres of the Thoreau Club, uh, for 219 units.
There is, that's not the spot where they put the
It's like where the camp, camp, little
It's where the camp is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there's gonna be a lot going on in town. So.
Okay. So what do you want from us?
Well, well, I, um,
Sorry.
No, well, uh, I think Sue might have a comment here. So let's hear from her and then we can talk about what we need to do. Sue. Okay. So first Elizabeth, I have a question for you. I know that under MBAT, MBTA communities, we are not allowed to require more than 10% affordable housing unless we get a financial feasibility analysis that might allow us to go up to possibly as high as 20% of housing. The entirety of the Junction Village property, it can only be used for affordable housing. So how does that interact with being in an overlay district? Would that mean that other properties would not have to include affordable housing? And what if somebody chose to develop other properties first and we required them to be 10% affordable individually, but then somebody came in later and did, wanted to develop Junction Village and it had to be 100%? Wouldn't that exceed, uh, the requirement? So I'm wondering how we're able to include the Junction Village site at all?
Um, so, um, what the board is developing is, uh, zoning. And, um, zoning does, does not care and MBTA zoning does not care um, what type of deed restriction may be placed on a private property. So, um, the, the zoning just says, you know, here's what's allowed under zoning and here's what's required under zoning for a land use. Um, it does not speak to individual deed restrictions. There's properties, you know, all over town that have, um, different type of deed restrictions. And, um, so whether, you know, the fact that there's a deed restriction, that all of those units have to be affordable, um, does, it, that doesn't matter. Uh, and that would be the same for the zoning multi- MBTA multifamily zoning says the towns, you know, can't require, you know, that it be over 55. You can't have any age restriction. That doesn't mean that somebody who comes in develops, you know, uh, a project that's, you know, multifamily, fif- more, you know, 15 units per acre. And by their own decision, want to restrict it as over 55, that, that's still their prerogative as far as how they want to develop their property. So the, the zoning does not, um, does not speak or mandate how somebody wishes to develop their own property. It just provides the rules in which you have to abide by. If you want to be more stringent, um, as a property owner or a developer, you're, you're free to do that.
Okay. And so that's essentially what has happened here, except in the opposite order of what one would expect. Thanks for that answer, Elizabeth.
Definitely.
Then my other comment is, um, I find this proposal rather disappointing because it seems carefully crafted to ensure that as little multifamily housing as possible will be able to be built. Either there will be a new 40B development or a new commercial development. Or there are existing developments which are at different ages, but not yet ready, not yet close to the point of, um, exhausting their useful lifetime and being developed. So it seems that it satisfies the state law. But I find it disappointing that this is what Concord would choose to do with this opportunity to provide housing for our people who would like to age in place and, well, age in Concord without leaving town for our, um, workers, for our, um, youngsters who have grown up and would like to live in their hometown and others.
So, um, from a, from a planner perspective, um, you know, part of, part of my, what I feel is my job, when the planning board discusses zoning bylaw amendments, um, it is, it is also wanting the board to be successful in what they're moving forward with. And for me to, you know, recommend that the board move forward with a zoning bylaw that probably does not have any chance of passing is, um, that's, that's a lot of wasted time and effort. Um, the, the planner side of me is, um, you know, Concord needs housing. Everybody understands that. But there is such a fine line in have, developing a zoning bylaw that allows Allows for that to happen at a measured pace that people can accept. And allow something to move forward where their fears. Um, don't get realized, and that's why you see. In the past, I'm gonna say, you know, at, at least that I've been with the town, um, you see. Incremental changes in the zoning bylaw for different things. We had an ADU bylaw that was very restrictive. Um, it got changed. There wasn't a, a huge. You know, influx of, you know, there wasn't hundreds of ADUs popping up. Um, in fact, there haven't been, you know, I think there's been. Uh, there was from nineteen seventy-four to twenty. Twenty, twenty twenty, when it got amended, there had been fifty-four, um, special permits issued for ADUs. Um, and then from twenty twenty to now, uh, I, I think it's six, I think it's like sixteen. Um, the same thing with the two family and residency by special permit. There wasn't this huge, you know, this huge influx, and so you, you see things getting changed every year. I, I agree with, I, I agree with you, Sue. But I also see that for the town to be found in non-compliance and not be able to. Um, receive funds for, you know, things that we know that are coming, whether it's. A, a new water treatment facility for NAGA, whether it's expansion of the, um, the treatment plant. Uh, whether it's, um, you know. Funds we got to help build Assabut Bluffs Residential Project. It's, you know, there's, there's a. So it's, it's finding that balance, but I, I do, I, I do agree, it is kind of disappointing. Um, but let's, let's get this in, let's get it on the books. Um, and then let's look at other ways to, you know, to tweak the bylaw, such as the two family and residence B.
If I might add, I, I do, um, agree with you, Sue. Um, I think one of the things we learned in this process is that the MBTA Communities Act. Is not necessarily the vehicle. To achieve that goal of more, even though it's supposed to, uh, you know, give us. Greater density transit oriented housing, which we all want. Um, for example, with the Thoreau Business District and mixed use, it really was. Not, it would be detrimental to, um, try and develop that under the MBTA communities. So I think we found ourselves somewhat boxed in. Um, with, um, a, you know, it was a tool, but not a very good tool for Concord to use to achieve. Greater density around, um. Uh, around transit, yeah, ironically. So I think it's, perhaps it's more disappointing that the act didn't help. Versus that we didn't try, but I think now maybe that's an opportunity to talk about. The other map that we generated, yeah.
Take questions on this one?
Um. Yeah, are there questions in the room on this initial map or comments? Um, and maybe we could see if there are other. Yes, please.
Um, Keith Bergman, uh, fifty-six White Ave, and also Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And with, we, it's worth noting that with the governor's release of her proposed housing bond bill. And a provision for the, uh, real estate transfer fee, which Concord has wanted for, since twenty nineteen. Uh, the governor's proposal conditions eligibility for that on compliance with MBTA community zoning. So if that's the version of a real estate transfer fee that gets passed by the state. And Concord would, it was not in compliance with MBTA communities, we'd also be at risk of not. You know, not being able to, to go after that, so I think that's important. Here, the, um, I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's, that the, that, uh, it's eighty-four acres. Towards a goal of fifty, somebody told me fifty-four and I think they misheard, misheard it. Uh, because that fifty-four would have been too close for comfort. Eighty-four is good, I, and, you know, I suppose, you know. You have to consider, well, what happens if, uh, is, uh, on the floor of town meeting, what if? There's an amendment to carve out one of those colorful squares. Do you still have enough? I mean, kind of, how much wiggle room is there? Uh, and, and if you, and if whatever you put in the, in the zoning bylaw. Is the, is basically the upper limit of what gets rezoned. With it, you know, with, uh, because town meeting would act within the four corners of that article. It just, you know, just, just be very sure that a- all of the areas that you could identify here can, can withstand. Local scrutiny and stay in, even, you know, even if the, uh, the state might, uh, take some of them. Some portions of them out because they don't comply for some other reason. But, uh, compliance with. MBTA communities, I think is the top, is the top priority.
Yeah, that, um, that will actually be a question I will, um, before, huh, yeah. In the next week or so, sending to the town moderator, um, how. Um, amendments on the floor of town meeting will or will not be handled because, um, this isn't. Um, this isn't just a map. Um, there's language that goes with this map and there's the whole compliance modeling that goes with. This map and it's all three of those things, so, um, to. To take, and, and what the board is presenting is all three of those things with that goal of being in compliance. So on the floor of town meeting, for somebody to take, you know, propose to take one particular parcel out. May, may not be within the four corners of the article because, um, they can't do, you know. They can't do that other piece of the compliance modeling and. That's the purpose is to have, at least have a district that is in compliance.
Engagement process will smoke out any perceived, uh, problems with any of those areas. Uh, that could be a goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see a number of hands up on this map, so shall we? Proceed with what comment, um, I didn't see who was first, but let's say Moya, Moira.
Hi, um, I just.
Moya, I think you're muted.
Hi, yes, no, I'm, I just, I just closed the video to be less distracting to people, um. You certainly have done a lot of work. I've been to all of your meetings and I think the municipal people and the planning board should be commended. I think it's a very difficult issue. I like Sue, I'm very disappointed in this map. Be, and one of the reasons is because, um. Describing Thoreau G- Gardens and that corner as having twelve units per acre is a little deceiving. Thoreau Gardens has thirty-one of those units. And it houses most of the only worker force housing, architects, teachers. Um, people on committees in this, in this community in that area. So I guess I have some ethical issues with the town targeting property that is already what we're trying to achieve. It's not affordable housing, it's regular rental housing. Um, but it is certainly going to be more affordable than anything that will be rebuilt here. And I think that, um, as a gentleman earlier spoke about the need to. And I, and I think, and I'm not sure whether this has happened, whether, um, Ms. Hughes and the planning board has spoken to people at the state level. To talk about the uniqueness of his, of Concord Center. Because it is a historic district. Um, but there are other part, parts of properties and co- the cross, the Crosby's is a perfect example. Now. I understand that that is gonna upset people, but I think that housing in general upsets people nowadays. Whether it's the taxes they have to pay on the land or the, the rentals that started three thousand dollars for a one bedroom. So I do believe we should be in com- in compliance, uh, in, in, you know, we, we should not let that go, but I. Do think we need to be more creative in our solutions.
Thank you. Um, Carol Savoy?
Yes, Carol Savoy, sixty-one Bellknap Street, Concord, um. I was just curious, um, since we now have a second forty B that I guess you just received. Um, you know, if that's gonna be built, shouldn't we try and, um, zone that just like we. Are zoning the other forty B on Baker Ave? Um, is sort of comment number one, and then it just seems like everything, you know, I know you're trying to get parity between the two. Train stations and get, you know, properties closer to town, but I still think, you know, we're allowed to do fifty percent outside of the. Train station and maybe, you know, look at the Prescott or the Vuz or whatever it's called today. Um, that's a big plot of property right down by the forty B as well. To zone things that are farther out of the center of town because folks that live in the center of town, I hear a lot of complaints about traffic. And, and what this is gonna do and, you know, once again, we're putting, you know, a thousand, we're zoning for a thousand ninety-four units. You know, half in West Concord and half in Concord Center. And that's at least, you know, one and a half cars per person, maybe two, so that's two thousand cars and that's a lot of traffic. To put in already trafficky era, areas, so I think it would make sense to try and spread it out a little bit more. Outside of the train areas in town and focus on areas that are already multifamily housing or soon to be multifamily housing like the two, the second forty B.
Thank you for your comment. Um, if you look again at the statistics, we are now, um, fifty-two point four percent, is that correct?
Yeah, so not, draft map is fifty-two point eight four percent.
Four percent.
Within the station area.
Within the station area, so should we put additional outside of the station area, then we would fall short and be out of compliance.
No, I'm just saying, um, that instead of, you know, maybe, instead of putting it at Elm Street, for example, or in Concord Market area. Like maybe put that in the Prescott, for example, or, um. You know, the new forty B or wherever it is in West Concord. I know we did, uh, like instead of Junction Village, for example. Do the new forty B, which is a larger area. Uh, so I'm not saying, you know, make more than fifty percent out of the area. I'm saying maybe swap out one of those areas because. Um, you know, we have a bigger area that's already gonna be housing that's coming up in the second forty B.
Okay, well, thanks for your comment. Um, Frank Feely?
Hi, Rich Feely, three forty-seven Lexington Road. Um, I know how hard everybody's worked, um, but I have great sympathy for Moira's comment. And I also like the suggestion that was just made, but most importantly, I'm to. I'm saddened that we have sort of totally thrown the Crosby's portion off the maps. Uh, I realize the concern is that you can't require multi-use, but my rec- recollection is you can. Provide incentives for multi-use. Um, you know, there's not a lot of retail use there now. There's three stores. Um, you could probably preserve them, uh, and still. Uh, not create a monster in terms of the size of the buildings. So I would suggest we get ourselves a little more. Uh, wiggle room in terms of totals and the total amount in the, uh. Central areas by including, uh, the Crosby's. Uh, area. I mean, I know that everybody on the planning board and Elizabeth, uh, was burned the last time around. Uh, but it was close and I really think it would be positive to include that. And then, you know, just to say we can, you know, negotiate to get some multi-use if that gets redeveloped. So I'd really like to see another look at using that. Perhaps not using the Thoreau Gardens piece. Uh, and then, um, you know, if we can stay at fifty percent, uh, it sounds to me like we're gonna get something. Uh, out at Thoreau, uh, club anyway, uh, why not include that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I, um, I, to, to that point, um, I would like to just. And. Reiterate a lot of the feedback we, um, that the board heard during these different is, yes. You know, you can include incentives for mixed use, um, but the. The feedback we got was, um. The trade-off of. By right multifamily in those areas, um, was not enough. To include those areas with incentives, knowing that. You may not get mixed use. You may just get by right residential. Um, and, and those, the Throw Depot was a perfect example, um, that risk. Um, was, uh, not enough for people to wanna take, so. Um, that was the other, you know, comments that a lot of people had also said, yes. Um, and I think the board has, um, and, and I just wrote the note, whether this should be part of the explanation or the presentation. Um, you know, the board has committed to looking at that mixed use section of the zoning bylaw. Um, again, um, and that the MBTA communities just may not be the right avenue to address. You know, how to, um, fix the mixed use zoning.
Thank you.
Heather?
Heather, your hand is up.
Yes, it is. I was just, uh, I wanted to ask if Moira could, um, tell us her full name and address for the record.
All right, I was on another call, oh, yes, it's Moira Walsh.
And your address, Moira?
One sixty-nine Thoreau Street.
Thank you.
I didn't think it was a town meeting. I didn't think we had to be that formal.
Okay, um.
Plan B?
So this is the other question.
Um, so the other question is, um, one of the other comments that the, um, that was brought up by people. Um, during all of these was, um, again, looking at options to, it. You know, to expand multifamily, um, options, maybe not at. Um, you know, three units per, I mean, fifteen units per acre, but, um. But to provide another, um, option that could be incorporated into the MBTA communities. Um, at a lower density. And I'm gonna share my screen, um, so. Um. This one takes a little bit more explanation. Um, so this map represents two sub-districts. There's, um, the blue area. Um, which are lots in the Residence C Zone District. And then the orange are lots in the Residence Bs in Zone District. Um, what the consultant did was, um, look at. These are compliant lots within those two zone districts, meaning they meet the minimum, um, lot area, ten thousand square feet in Residence C. Twenty thousand square feet in Residence B, um, the consultant. Ran the GIS compliance model, taking in minimum lot size as well as, um, the dimensional requirements. Including the floor area ratio, uh, maximum floor area ratio requirement. Ran the calculation and these lots would be in compliance. With those dimensional requirements with, um, by right, three units. Um, you know, per compliant lot. Um, and so this option provides, um, a capacity of five hundred and eighty-eight. Units, um. Uh, uh, an average, the density is four units per acre, so, um, but each of these lots would be a compliant lot. um but each of these lots would be a compliant lot with the floor area ratio, um maximum floor area ratio requirement. Still part of the dimensional requirements for three units per lot.
Wait, did you say three units or four units?
Um, so the the overall, um, the overall capacity averages out to four units per acre?
With a maximum of three per block.
The, um, but this map, it, the the maximum is three units, um, you know, per compliant lot.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, I heard wrong. Okay, next question, um, would would it still be compliant with this added to option one or with this replacing some portion of option one?
It it could be either.
The other question.
Oh, oh, it would work either way.
Yeah, this this begged the question for me was if you started to add larger parcels outside of what we were talking about in the first scenario, would we have to move to something like this in order to make up the, you know, when you start adding twenty acres here and fifteen acres way outside of the, you know, because that would presumably if we're talking that it's fifty-four acres and you suddenly add thirty acres outside of the outside of the the um half mile radius, you have to start adding a lot more acreage inside the, so it would start to look like something like this, right? Presumably, I mean, I know you haven't crunched all the numbers, but this, this is sort of a way to compensate for adding things like the Prescott in. Right?
Um, so this option right here.
I know, it's purely theoretical.
Yeah, it 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 is not in compliance, you couldn't just do this.
Right, five hundred and eighty-eight.
Yeah, it's only five hundred and eighty-eight units and I don't know how many acres it is, but um, but y- y- yes, if if you, you know, if you start adding more things outside of the district, um, you know, larger parcels that spreads out the density, so you know, that's where you would have to add additional, um, you know, additional density somewhere else.
There's also, there also is, we haven't talked, discussed it much in our conversations, but there is an um area limit um of one and a half percent of the area of the town, I believe.
Um, I don't, I don't think so.
No?
No, because I think there's some, some towns that have just zoned. Yeah, I know, I don't, I'll have to check, but I don't, I don't think so.
There is an upward, I think there is an upward limit, we've never thought we would approach that.
Ah, I have, I have not heard that, but.
Prescott and Thorough Club and over here, you've we want to make sure that we wouldn't affect that, and then also with this lower density, we also have to make sure that we don't lower it on average below
Right, right.
Fifteen per acre, so, so there are some questions about this, but we ran this primarily because we want to ask the question, could we meaning, in a meaningful way, um, get um a gradual um uh increase in density within the Concord um center uh area. And we, and we just took the whole area. Rather than split it into neighborhoods randomly. This is the result we got, and the question is, okay, what do we?
Yeah.
What do we?
It's a great piece of information.
Yeah, but I'm not sure it achieves what, you know, you know, the, the conversation.
I, 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 I will say it is a good conversation piece in the sense that it lets people see what you're dealing with when you talk about increasing density in smaller parcels in isolated areas, the alternative is less density over a much, seemingly much broader area, which presumably would impact more neighborhood character, which people are concerned about with, you know, because if a developer bought two parcels next to each other, does that become a five-unit development now? Right now it couldn't, but with this kind of zoning, that's a possibility that people need to be aware of when we talk about moving slowly and I, you know, there is positives to those kind of developments in the sense that it is a lot more units. Presumably people are driving less, they're walking more, this is a very walkable neighborhood. Some of it has sewer support already, you know, there, there is there's positives and negatives, do I think that there's much support as far as town meeting would go for something like this? I would say probably not, because this, this was, this was, I, I will say, to their credit, this was a neighborhood that mobilized very aggressively against development or change in zoning for for the Crosby's.
Three, three acre, I mean, um, Throw Depot.
Thorough Depot, yeah, so, so, uh, you know. It it is a really interesting thought process, I will say, though, you know.
But this may also be where, you know, the board comes back and, you know, again, the MBTA community zoning may not be the place to, to make this incremental change. Um, we ran this and, and I, I don't think it does, you know, but the board is moving forward with, you know, two family and residence B-zone district, which would be most of the orange um by special permit. Um, the FAR would still apply. Um, setbacks would still apply, height require, all of that stays the same, but it, it does give another option. Um, and, you know, it, it's interesting, you know, even when you look at the residence C-zone district of the special permits that have been issued, you know, one is on Lang Street and the other, you know, three are in West Concord, so you know, there's, there is residence C-zone district in, in Concord Center, but, you know, again, that, you know, that has not been used, but um, there are more, you know, two families in different, you know, in different areas around the town, so um, you know, the residence B-zone district has, does not have that historic two-family nature, you know, like Comm Ave and um, you know, some of the areas around Concord Center, so um that, that may be an incremental change. And Sue, I cut her off.
Oh, well, given my comment earlier, I'm sure it's a surprise to no one that I think this would be a very good form, a very good change in zoning for Concord. Um, uh, following on what you said, Andrew, it's true that if someone bought two adjacent properties and developed them together, it could have five or even six units, but of course, the property would be twice the size. So it would still be, be very low density overall. I do see your point, Elizabeth, that if we really think we're that close to failing to get anything through town meeting at all, maybe we shouldn't include this, but even more than that, I think that we should be very clear that if we were to move forward with something like this, we should have some kind of parity between Concord Center and West Concord and uh uh it's a lot of work for the consultant to draw these things up, I could certainly see why we would have it only drawn up for Concord Center. Plus, there is the point that um in terms of housing density in the two areas, historically, Co- West Concord has more density overall, but um, we would still want to do something in terms of parity between the two town centers. Whether it was necess- not necessarily parity in the area, but ta- parity in um, what end density it would maximally allow, not that most of properties would get developed at all, since, say, a perfectly fine houses on them that no one would tear down anyway. So, uh, that was a very wishy-washy comment, saying that I wish we would go forward with this. And I'm guessing we probably won't, at least not under MBDA communities, but uh still, I'm sure we'll get some comments from some people about, but why always Concord Center and I'd like to say that I think that this is an exercise, and if, if, what, if and when we move forward with this, we would find a way to achieve parity at some level, or, or reasonable parity at some level.
I think it's amazing that you've been able to get as far as you have with this project. You know, that's, that's crazy, thinking about trying to do that in the, the town of Concord, okay? Um, you've done a good job with it, I think.
So the question is, can we make this officially from the planning board, uh, draft one?
And we're just talking about the draft, the actual draft one.
Yes.
Right, without the
Without the
Without the optional, right, yeah, I just, I just want to be clear, right?
So from, um, you know, a community engagement piece, um, Linda and I were talking about, um, sending out a postcard to all of the um property owners and um to Moira's point. Um, you know, sending up, you know, taking a flyer, you know, over to, you know, Thorough Gardens and um, you know, other places where there's tenants and not just the property owner, um notifying them of um, of this map, um, it would probably happen after, um, it is at the next meeting, we hope to um actually have the draft language of the bylaw. Um, and so then after that, um, send that specifically to um, those um property owners and tenants. Um, and to get, you know, to get their feedback and, and maybe it's to hold, you know, just a, a a stakeholders' meeting before the end of the year with those particular property owners and tenants. Um, to get their feedback and be able to answer questions.
Do we have a template for the warrant articles in the bylaw?
Um, we're um using the, the template from the Thorough Depot, um, because that um added an actual new section to the bylaw, which that's what this will be, this will be a new section, a, a new overlay district. Um, so that will be the, the template.
But aren't the other towns devising some, writing up some sort of a warrant article as well? I mean, it's what, a hundred and fifty-three pounds happened to do it?
Hundred and seventy-seven. But, but the, the, the structure of the article, um, oh, yeah, no, yeah, trust me. Oh, yeah, yeah, so we're, we're pulling pieces and parts from, from all of those.
Yeah, because I understand what you're trying to accomplish, I'm not so sure, I understand how we're going to articulate it to the public.
Uh, well, that's, that's Linda's job as far as the presentation.
I'm excited for the warrant article, which names specific parcels, it's just a list of like, these are now recent.
Yes, no, it will.
I know, I know, it'll have to.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, it adopts a map.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, it adopts a map, it does not list specific parcels.
Yeah.
It's the same as the zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw does not list specific parcel, it just adopts, it adopts, it adopts a map.
Have that information.
Right, right, yeah, you can pull that up on the, yeah.
Yeah, that would
I'd love to see how we're going to articulate the, the project, I see what we're trying to do, but, so.
Yes, um, and we'll take public comment.
And, uh, I was wondering, I said, if the deck seven, when the uh, architect roundtable, the seven words including mine and yours and need poorly, and I think, uh, I think this project is being great thing for us to get briefed on, and so that we all rock staff on our way to town meeting, because with that that the uh, at, at an earlier um housing roundtable, I asked for show of hands uh who's, you know, who in that group was willing to uh pay attention to what was going on and or to be supportive. And, and we, and I want to make sure that we're still all raising our hands and, and, and if not holding them.
Do you have a date, Keith?
Not yet, we uh need to, we're going to check and see when, when the selectmen can be there and then work with that list. Uh, but hopefully, uh, you know, we're looking at uh November or uh early this, or early December.
That would be excellent.
Yeah, that would be excellent.
We, we would very much appreciate you being able to present this and
Right.
Get feedback.
November's only a week away.
Probably early.
Early December, okay.
We'll be waiting about
Just not December fourth, that's my birthday and I take the day off. Right, so I, the minute I turn fifty, I take, now I take my birthday off.
You can't.
So.
Okay.
Going to be fifty-six.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, well, um, next we have planning board liaison and town planner updates.
So I, I already, um, gave two of my updates.
Yeah.
Um, however, but, um, just real briefly, um, it's, it's somewhat MBTA communities related, but um, now that we're to a point of starting to draft the language um and have the compliance model, um, we can move forward with the economic feasibility analysis, uh for which we did get um tw- I think twenty-five thousand dollar grant to do that as well. Um, and so, so, um, so I will be sending an email tomorrow um to the state because there were some questions about who was eligible to do them and how to move forward and um, so that's, I think, something that we can now move forward. Um, so that will be uh the next step, now that we have the, at least the compliance model and because they can just take all of the requirements off that and, um, and some of the other language. Um, so, um, then, um, hopefully tomorrow I will have the, um, the, um, proposed forty B up on another dedicated website, um, it's two seventy-five Forest Ridge Road. Residence at Thorough is the project. Um, it is uh two hundred and nineteen units, I don't know the breakdown yet. Um, in three buildings, um, they're all three-story, uh with about, um, I want to say um, three, three hundred and hmm, uh, ninety-seven or forty-seven parking spaces, um, surface parking spaces around the building. Um, so all of the, that application to mass housing for the project eligibility letter, there's conceptual plans, elevations, uh site drawings. Um, hopefully going to have those posted uh on the website tomorrow.
Speaking of forty Bs, there's a meeting coming up.
Um, yep, so Thursday night, um, it is a hybrid meeting for the zoning board of appeals. Um, it, it will be at the Harvey Wheeler and by Zoom. Um, for the Novo Riverside Commons Project at two ninety-two, two ninety-four Baker Avenue. Um, the actual board meeting will start at six, uh, the board has a um forty B consultant who will be conducting a forty B training for the board. Um, it is a public meeting, it, um, so people can come, they can listen. Um, but the consultant and the board will not be taking public comments or questions. Uh, this is purely a training for the board, but I think it's going to be incredibly informative. Uh, and then the actual public hearing will start at seven. Um, at this point, after speaking with um the chair, this is the information gathering portion of this. Um, the applicant will make a complete presentation about all of the aspects. Um, the board will, you know, ask their questions, um, then they will take um public comment and questions. Um, as an information gathering, what, you know, what questions, concerns, issues, what, you know, additional information may, you know, they need. Um, the board does have a, an outside consultant reviewing, um, the site, the stormwater drainage, um, the traffic reports and um the floodplain uh compensatory storage um, and work in the floodplain. That is happening now, um, it will, um, and after Thursday um night, um, the board will be continuing the public hearing to another special hybrid meeting uh for November thirtieth. Um, and again, um, I can't remember if that's the, at the Harvey Wheeler at the townhouse, but um it will be a hybrid meeting again. And uh for this board, the um applicants and their development team will be coming to the board on November uh fourteenth. Um, n- not to redo their presentation, um, but to be there for the board um to per, if the board Per if the board has questions, wants to review certain things as, um, this board gets. Uh, moves forward and provides their comments, um, questions, concerns. Um. Recommendations, um, uh, so the applicant will be here to, you know, be able to. Address any aspect of the project that the board may have questions on. Um, and. Um. For the new forty B, um, what, what will also be up on the website, um, they, Mass Housing will be conducting another site visit similar to what they did for Novo. Um, and. Um. I believe that's in, um. Two, two weeks. I don't, that's gonna also be up on the website, but I will make sure I let everybody know. Um, and then. I already said, but I'll say it again, um, you know, we got the fifteen thousand dollar grant from Mass Housing Partnership to move forward with the MBTA communities. Site plan rules and regulations, um, which they're very excited. I, uh, Concord will be the first. Community, um, that they have, have a consultant helping with. Um, I've sent them all of the examples that the board looked at, the draft that the board that we got to three years ago. Um, and so they're very excited because they feel this is going to be incredibly helpful for many, um, communities, so.
And December eighteenth, is it?
Um, oh. Um. Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Yes, um, so everybody, I believe, did reply that they are available for a, um, an added meeting if you should need it for December nineteenth. Um, that.
That would be virtual.
Um, I. I would hope so. Because you have a meeting, you have a, you have a meeting on the twelfth.
Yeah.
Right.
Um.
Will the information for Thursday, this Thursday, it will be available on the web. I'm flying back from Chicago. I don't know that I can make that meeting. Will that be on, uh, it'll be recorded, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, Minuteman Media Network is, will be at, um, Harvey Wheeler and, um, they will be recording the whole thing. Yep, and so that will be posted, you know, a couple of days later.
Trying to catch you while you're flying, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it will be recorded. Um. Okay.
Okay. Then I think. I can thank everybody come, for coming this evening. And if you have follow-up. Thoughts about, um. The MBTA communities, make sure we hear about it. All right, thank you. Thank everyone else for attending.
Thanks, Linda.